will be joining us at the next meeting. She was also elected by the town. With this, we will be saying goodbye to Rosa Fernandez, who has been along with Gregory and Sign on the board for eight years. The rest of us having been here for two. You guys are the veterans of this line. And so we have a couple of folks who wanted to say a few things.
People who've been working with you for a while. And with that, I'm going to call Bob Belden up to the podium. For people who don't know, Bob was a former chair of the board. You served with Joy and Rosa for six years, is that correct? Bob?
We served together six years, that's correct.
Okay, thanks very much.
I'm going to do this because it's for the record, that's Bob Belden, seven Red Barn Lane. Brookfield resident.
Shall I turn the timer now? You've turned the timer on me many a time, I'm going to turn it on you.
And this is not going to even get to the three minutes.
Okay.
And please forgive me, I wrote notes for myself, Rosa, so I'm going to do it. So I'm standing here tonight to thank Rosa Fernandez for her service to the town, to the students, to the families, and to the staff of the Brookfield School System. I'd like to make a couple of observations. Dedicating yourself to the bettering of schools and students is huge. It takes a lot of effort to be on the Board of Education, all you guys know that. What with the board meetings, the subcommittee meetings, the interview teams, the negotiations, and budgets. One doesn't enter it lightly, often trying to balance family and jobs with what goes on for your board commitment. It's hard. My observation, though, is that once you're in the middle of serving, the weight of the time commitment can feel a little bit lighter because you're doing things for the kids. Being a successful Board of Education member also requires heart. Not every decision is easy. Not every decision is black and white. While 90% of the votes the BOE takes are unanimous, the other 10% can be pretty stressful at times. But the heart to always, always, make decisions that are in the best interests of all the children in our district, in the best interests of our staff, and in the best interests of the family and the community, that requires a steadfast heart in doing the right thing. And being the chairperson of the board, which you were, is huger. Trying to figure out how to say that. The weight of keeping a board working effectively, taking the time to talk through challenges with the superintendent, and keeping the board focused on issues that it needs to, all that takes more and more focus and strength. Rosa, you were all of these in your eight years on the board, and more. I am proud to have served with you. You were part of the team that brought CLAS to our town, that's a legacy. You managed the complexities of COVID. Wow. And you led us through any number of wildly complex budget issues over the years. You've been strong, you've been focused, you've shown huge commitment, but most of all, you're heart. So, thank you. Welcome to the club of ex-BOE members, and to the club of prior BOE chairs. And we never let go of our commitment to making Brookfield Schools great. Thank you for what you've done. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot, Bob. And now, did you have something to say, you and Erin put together a statement?
Just a quick little thank you so much for your time. I thought you'd served with us on the facilities subcommittee, you really showed us the ropes.
Finance.
Excuse me. Finance subcommittee.
That too.
And that too. Well, you showed me the ropes in a lot of areas, not just that. You have helped me with facilities as well, and I really appreciate it. We both appreciate the time you spent to really show us ropes and teach us finance, because it's not easy. We're still learning, so we really appreciate the time it took to made it very easy for us to transition, so thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything?
Similar, I just wanted to thank you for being a sounding board and such a great leader and, you know, being there when we needed some help on how to move through situations because of our inexperience. It's been great working with you. Enjoy your retirement.
Right. I do feel like I'm like retiring in some way.
Yep. Did you guys want to add anything?
I have some words later.
Okay, well, I'll just say, to echo what Stephanie said, and actually, Rob and Erin, thank you for your mentorship about how to do this. The finance presentations required many, 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 many hours. So I learned a lot, thank you very much. Whoever the next finance chair is has their work cut out for them. Big, big shoes. So, thank you and enjoy your retirement. This is a gift from the board to you.
Thank you.
And by extension, the town. Lisa, thank you for organizing that.
Thank you, Lisa.
All right, so with that, we're going to move on to the next item of our agenda, which is the student spotlight from Whiskinier Middle School. Dean Miranda, please come to the podium and tell us what you got.
Just want to set this up for them. Hi, I'm Dean Miranda, principal at Whiskinier Middle School. And as you know, every time I say this, but this is the best, these are the best nights when we're able to spotlight the students, the awesome students and staff that we have at Whiskinier Middle School. Logan Sullender talked a couple of weeks ago with the Brookfield Education Foundation, and this is one of the grants we're going to talk about as our live announcements that Logan had spoken about. And I don't want to take any further time, I'm going to introduce, we have Ms. Marshall, who's one of our advisors, along with Ms. Whiting, and two of our awesome eighth graders, we have Sasha and Amaya, and they're going to talk to you now.
Thank you for the opportunity to show you our live morning announcements. We call it WMS Live. We wanted to have a live broadcast that the students could be engaged in, where it would be visual, opposed to just having the announcements over the intercom. We wanted to have it student-led and student-centered. So I went to the BEF last year and got a grant to buy equipment. And we started, and it was a big learning curve, a lot of technology. And we went live in May 2025. We put the call out to eighth graders and seventh graders, and we got eight seventh graders. It was the end of the year for the eighth graders, so we had the seventh graders step up, and they've done a phenomenal job. We presently have over 12 eighth graders, and we rotate through jobs, and they are on two weeks at a time. But it's not just the anchors, it's the people behind the scenes, which you'll see in a moment. And in the new year, we will put the word out to seventh graders, and we'll have our eighth graders train the seventh graders so that we can keep going, because we actually started this year on the very first day of school, because we had the experience from, they had the experience from last year. The students are now working on new segments. We've got, you know, the basics under our belt. So now we're trying to, you know, make it a bit more exciting and have different segments, maybe even use two cameras and have, you know, roving reporters if we can get the sound to work. And the most recent thing that they've been working on is interviewing our new staff, and then they'll put those clips up on the broadcast. And we haven't used all our money because we've been trying to figure out our space. And you'll see in what you see today, they'll be holding papers, the idea is to have a monitor so that they can, you know, really understand, you know, to watch the broadcast. So we have Sasha, who's going to tell you what's a typical broadcast.
So we usually start with like the intro, which is just hellos, good mornings. And then we go on to the pledge and the moment of silence, of course. And then after that, we have what day it is, so an A-day or a B-day, and the core rotation for the day. And then we move on to the lunch for the day, and then our announcements. So our announcements are things such as after-schools, clubs, and teachers and staff put in these announcements. And then personally, one of my favorite parts is happy birthdays. So students who have birthdays on that day, we announce and celebrate them. And then we finish off with the mission statement.
And then Amaya's going to tell you about some of the jobs.
The jobs we have in WMS Live are the director who count us off and get us ready to start the live. The anchors who are the ones telling all the announcements. The green screen people who show all the screens for the happy birthdays and the lunch. And... Oh. Oh, yeah, and the directors.
She's one of our directors. Timing is of the essence, because we, the students get off the bus at 8:05. We go live at 8:11 with the screen, so they have to do their sound check and their positioning before then. And then at 8:15 and 30 seconds, we go live because we have to get to class by 8:22. So now, we're going to show you a behind-the-scenes and just a snippet of one of our announcements. And this was, the day that you will see is our walk-a-thon day. So the students are wearing fun things. So I'm thinking I just...
Here's a sneak peek at our production staff, hard at work behind the scenes.
Good morning, Whiskinier Middle School. I'm Amaya.
And I'm Felica.
And we're coming to you live from the WS studio with your morning announcements.
And here is what the school sees.
It is a B-day, and the rotation is four, five, one, two, three. All grades will follow the walk-a-thon schedule. Lunch is immediately closed. Picture retake day is October 28. The Harlem Wizards will be playing at Brookfield High School on Sunday, October 26th, from 3 to 5 p.m. Tickets are now on sale. Ticket information is posted on Parents Square. There are also posters in our hallways. Some familiar staff from CLAS will be playing. Mr. Patrino, Ms. Bell, Ms. Capone, and Ms. Ginsburg. Come cheer on your teachers.
A WMS sports update. Yesterday, the girls hockey team won their game against New Milford. In the first quarter, Natalie assisted Reagan's goal. And then again, in the first quarter, Ellie scored a goal during a corner with an assist from Lillian. In the second quarter, Lillian scored a goal with an assist from Ellie. Overall, the girls played a great game, but a shout-out to Emily, who played amazing, and to all the defense that worked really hard.
So that's just a part of it. So you can see, they're doing a great job. Thank you.
Did you have any questions for them?
No questions, they're willing to answer questions. Sorry, I forgot about that part.
I have a question. I have a question. When do you start training the younger kids? Is it like on a rolling basis? Or do you, you know, put out the call in, say, March, and, you know, like, how does that work? How much overlap is there between the people who have experience and the people who are just getting experience?
So, we have, we meet every Monday after school. So like when we, when new people come in, say, in March, and we go through all jobs and through all the steps with them, until they really like learn and get the hang of it. And we usually start like right away. It's pretty easy to catch on. We've had a lot of new eighth graders recently, so it's pretty much the same thing.
Yeah, so since it's an after-school activity, they're part of that activity. So it's a club. And then what we'll do is they'll just sign up for, we do a two-week segment so that it rolls pretty quickly every morning because you can see how tight the schedule is in the morning.
Do students or your friends ever give you any feedback?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So, say we have trouble with sound or the mics, whatever it is, they will give us feedback, and we always do try to take it and fix it. But overall, I think most students have seemed to like it. I think it's easier to kind of remember and follow along with the announcements when you get to see them rather than hearing them on the loudspeaker.
I have a question. Do you guys think you and your fellow students came into working on the morning announcements with confidence? Or do you think this experience has helped build confidence in front of the camera and in front of other people?
I think it built confidence because, like, at the start, people were like more nervous because they didn't know like what was going on. And I feel like as time goes on, like, it's getting more easier.
Yeah, I think the same thing. I think it definitely built both my public speaking experience and my confidence.
I think we can relate to that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you so much.
And I just have to, another quick shout-out, that you brought that up, I appreciate that. Because getting kids to get up and speak in front of class sometimes is scary. They always joke around like, how about you, Miss Rann, I'm like, I just talk in front of anybody. But for them to get up in front of a screen and then knowing that all the school, not just their class or class, the whole entire school is watching, is really amazing. And I think some of the students that started not thinking they were going to be on the anchors moved into those positions and see how really cool it is. So I just want to make sure, shout-out to those guys. The students.
Thanks very much. That always makes our, makes our movie, doesn't it?
Mm-hmm.
All right, we're going to move now to public comment. So first up, we have Mr. Morash, you've signed up to speak about written correspondence and public comment. Mr. Morash, hold on, I forgot to say, just as a reminder to the public, when you come up to the podium, please identify yourself as a Brookfield resident. You are not required to give your street address. Please keep your comments to the agenda item that you recorded, and each speaker will have three minutes. Thanks.
Mark Morash, Brookfield resident. Kind of just a number of little comments, speaking about the public comment section. I noticed while I was looking at the agenda and documents that the facilities committee and CADE are kind enough to actually put in their minutes a little bit of a blurb about what the person said during the public comment. I asked the policy committee tonight to do the same. I'm going to ask the board to do the same. I know, I like to know what my neighbors are thinking and what they're communicating, and I think other folks would as well. In that same regard, with written correspondence, I have started FOIA-ing all of the written correspondence. I am going to get it, I am going to put it online, and I'm going to say that the Board of Education could very simply do what the Board of Selectmen do, which is, in the minutes, put a link to each of the emails that come from the people in this town. I'd like to know what my neighbors are thinking. I think you'd probably get more feedback from parents and citizens if they didn't think their emails went into the abyss and all that turned out was their name. I know this for a fact, because I had multiple people mention it to me when I was knocking doors. If I have to FOIA, I will FOIA, but I'm asking you to be forthcoming. It's like in the policy meeting, how can we publicly comment on something when the policy that's on the agenda isn't available to the public at all? I couldn't comment on what was going on in policy today because it wasn't made available. I'm told I have to FOIA it, or maybe not, we don't know. Maybe it'll show up before the next meeting, maybe I'll see it 24 hours before. You're not offering people the opportunity to read and digest and study and learn and bring forth intelligent commentary to the board. Maybe that's on purpose. Maybe it's on purpose that if I'm not talking about something that's on the agenda, I have to wait till nearly 9:00 p.m. to speak about it. I've had a number of children come up to me, students in the schools, say, I'd really like to talk to the board about X. And I'd love to say to them, come to a meeting, but then I have to tell them, you're going to have to wait until nine o'clock till pretty much the end of the meeting because your topic isn't on the agenda. I think we'd love to have more kids here, I think we should have more kids here, but I think making them wait until the end of the meeting, when they should probably be home studying, possibly getting to bed early so they can get up early, probably isn't the way to organize allowing people to speak publicly. Thank you.
Thank you. I hope that I pronounced this correctly, is it Dimar or Damar? Damar, Mrs. Damar, to talk about security.
I've got to just move this so I can read my paper here. Hi, I'm Ellen Damar, Brookfield resident. And I wanted to speak tonight about the incident that occurred at the high school on November 13th. It was a security breach where an unauthorized person was able to enter the school building. The account that the school provided to us was very limited, and it appears to be extremely different from what eyewitness accounts have described from students who actually were there. And I would really like an explanation as to why parents are not being given complete and accurate information about the incident that occurred, especially when it was such a serious safety violation. It concerns me really a great deal about my daughter's safety. It was sort of brushed off as, oh, it was just a former student that entered the building to come visit a teacher. But let's not forget, Adam Lanzo was a former student at Sandy Hook, and that didn't work out so well. So telling us that it was a former student really means nothing. That person could be very dangerous, and they shouldn't have been in the building without authorization. I'd also like to understand why, when the person was discovered as an unauthorized visitor, why there was not a lockdown or a hold-in-place? We've been given a lot of information recently about new procedures for that, and it was the perfect opportunity to put that in place. It's really unconscionable to me that there was no lockdown or hold-in-place. I mean, this person could have been dangerous and we're just letting everybody continue in the hallways and wander around the school. That seems really dangerous to me and very upsetting. And lastly, since the incident occurred, there's been literally no follow-up. It's been almost a week. And I would really like to know what's being done to increase the safety of the school and prevent this from happening in the future. Are we going to start IDing people when they walk in? Are we adding additional security at the doors? How did this person get in the building? And with the security that we have, who wasn't paying attention? And how do we stop this from happening again? Because if that person did it, anyone could just walk in the building. And that's terrifying to me. So I'm just curious when we're going to get an update and what's being done to ensure our children's safety.
Thank you very much, Ms. Damar. We have a couple other folks who have signed up to comment on security. And then to the degree that we can, we may be able to share some information. I think that might be your call about how much we can speak to it. Okay, so, Mrs. Crawford.
Hi, my name is Dr. Anne Crawford. I am a Brookfield resident and also a student, a parent of a high school student here as well. Echoing what Ellen has just said, I'm looking for additional information as well. I find it very, very disconcerting that I'm finding out most of my information from my son and his friends, and not from the school itself. We really need to be kept informed. We need to know what's going on to prevent this from happening again. This is not something to be taken lightly. I don't care if it was a former student, if it was a former teacher, I don't care who it was. They weren't supposed to be here. So why were they here, and what's being done about it?
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. And Mrs. Kakes.
Deborah Kakes, Brookfield resident. September 16th, I was dropping my daughter off at school at the middle school, and I too witnessed something that I felt was a potential security breach. I had written in to the board, I don't know if you ever received it, I never heard word back, as well as the principal and a few other key players. When I had written in, I asked for, it had to do about a vendor that had entered our school. It was about a car that was parked, and where it was parked, it was right at the entrance. And I said, that's odd that it's in the back, you know, that's a drop-off time, it's a very vulnerable time to have somebody back there. And I, somebody, one of the school members had written back that it was a vendor that was working on something in the gym, and that, and that they were supposed to be done, I guess, or whatever, and they were still there. But nonetheless, I went on to, I went down a little bit of a rabbit hole because I was wondering why are we allowing people to come in the back, come into the school before they actually can sign in? And I'm actually getting two different stories. People are saying that no one signed in, and then I'm hearing that somebody did sign in. Nonetheless, you have to come to the front of the school to sign in. So I also found out that there's a swipe, I guess, machine for their ID, which only checks if they're a registered sex offender. So for vendors that come into our school, there is no background check that we do on that. So while there are vendors working in our school with our children present, there's no background check provided ahead of time. We do more for felons and inmates in prisons checking backgrounds than we do for our children in school. I know if I want to go read a book or be the mom in the classroom, I have to fill out a whole background check as a taxpayer and a parent and a loving community member, but yet as a complete stranger that comes into our school, they don't have to fill out anything. That's very concerning to me. Anyway, I went down a little bit of a rabbit hole because I didn't get the answers that I wanted in regard to our school safety plan and our, you know, the process of which we went with signing people up, you know, for background checks. Nonetheless, we have from July to November 1st to provide a safety plan to the state for our school. I'm very concerned about the quality of this safety plan because when I asked for it in September, we had none. We had not submitted a safety plan. I found out, I ended up going all the way up the ladder, and I ended up calling Homeland Security. And our safety plan was submitted November 4th. Most schools all over have their safety plans submitted before the start of the school year. Why we don't have a safety plan, why we were three days late in getting a safety plan submitted is beyond me. I also looked through the coordinators' meeting, the security task force meeting, and the Board of Ed.
Mrs. Kakes, please wrap up.
Yep. And I had not found any executive board meetings or special meetings in regard to going over a school, a school, the school task, you know, the safety, security plan. There is, this is an all-hazard safety plan that is required by the state each year. Each year, all these signatures are required. Okay? I would like to know how the Board of Ed Chair has signed off on a safety plan, right, that we have to submit each year, when nothing was brought before the board. That concerns me. This was submitted to the state on November 4th.
So that one doesn't require a board vote?
Well, that's what I was told by Homeland Security.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Kakes.
You're welcome. Also, one more thing. I went to the security task force meeting on, just for record-keeping, on the 24th, September 24th, when all this had occurred, I went to the security task force meeting, and not everything was put in the notes that I felt was very important to put in the notes, like our Alice training, all of our principals at our school, especially Mr. Belanda, he said that it cannot come soon enough. So far, none of our schools have had any crisis training, standardized crisis training. That's concerning. In the notes, it says that what was submitted was the minutes.
You need to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm requesting that the board file a motion to rescind the minutes on the September 24th, on the October 8th meeting because the meeting minutes were not correct.
Thank you, Mrs. Kakes. Thank you, Mrs. Kakes.
Was that the...
Kathy, can you cut the mic, please?
Police chief requested to come before the board to hire additional security.
Okay, we're going to move on, thank you. There were a couple of things, Stephanie, did you want to say something? Do you take the, did you want to take up the, anything about the security task force and the minutes, or no? Okay. So, these are really powerful statements about security. And I think that the board... I'm not sure either. The documents that were just handed out. Right. Uh, no. So it's important that the community understand that security is extremely important to this Board of Education and to the administration. In fact, it's a top, the top priority for our interim superintendent. We were just speaking about this yesterday and the day before. So, do you feel in a position to speak to the board? So do you feel in a position to speak to this?
So we don't respond to public comment, but I did happen to include some brief comments on this in my superintendent report, but in general, we redirect public comment to the appropriate administration for follow-up.
Right. Okay. Great. Thank you. Well, so that concludes public comment for this meeting, and let's move now then to written correspondence. Just before you get started, Stephanie, a flurry of correspondence has come in to the board in the past 24 hours, maybe, maybe 20 or so?
Yes.
I just wanted you guys to know that I had responded to each of those up until like 5:00 PM, so there may be one or two that I didn't, I didn't copy you all because they were all the same thing.
No, I saw quite a few. So I was gonna, so 19 responses have come in. I read through and categorized them all, and I was going to revisit them during the calendar discussion, so I was just going to read the names at this point. Anything that came in after 6:00 PM, it was a policy meeting, so they're not included, so apologies to anyone that emailed after 6:00 PM. That was a result, so we put it in the three main points, and then we had put a thing out on Facebook in Parents Square, I don't know, like, two weeks ago, and then a reminder. You can't hear me? That's unusual. Okay. And then we put it on Parents Square, and then a reminder was sent out today, and that was where everybody was at, so, which I was happy that we, because originally, I think we had had like three responses, and I knew there were people that talked to me personally, and so I was like, please, send an email. I will go through them all today. So 19 of the names I'm about to read are from before 6:00 PM today, for the calendar. So the following people have written to the board since October 22nd. Irene Correa, four emails. Andy Correa, two emails. Shannon Riley, two emails. Michael Enzag, Elena Lopez. Elizabeth Santos. Deborah Kakese. Mary Borges. Catherine Hansen. Amy McGoldrick. Juan Alcoer. Michelle Buterula. I'm so sorry, you guys, if I'm pronouncing your names wrong. Buterula. Erica Dallow. Adam Wallawick. Melissa Haines. Casey Metei. Jackie Salsito. Pascalitoak. Flavia Alvez. Jenna Shatino. Crystal McHale. Alexa Brown. Lindsay Gale. Michelle French. Gillian Verastro. There you go.
Awesome. Okay, so now let's move on to the approval of board minutes.
I move that the board approve the minutes listed below as recommended. Regular meeting, October 22nd, 2025. Special meeting, November 5th, 2025.
Is there any discussion of this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? All right, so that passes unanimously. Now let's have the superintendent's update. Mrs. Tenza.
Good evening. Thank you. So I always start with enrollment. I always track that number. So as of November 1st, we are at 2,545 learners. I'd like to just briefly mention that part of our educational process is that administrators and teachers follow the Connecticut Plan of Establishing Goals for the Year, and the goal-setting process is complete. It does take a great bit of time on everybody's part, and I share it because the time is important, and I want to point out that our teachers and administrators are working very hard for the district. The goal alignment to student growth is a critical part of our work, and I appreciate the fact that our staff and administrators took growth and learning in mind seriously this year and aligned their goals accordingly to try to get to know each learner and help them move forward from where they are. So I wanted to recognize that behind-the-scenes work. I also want to point out that some of those comments, those written comments that have come in, we do read them, and so several of them focused around eighth-grade coursework credit, you know, and I know that's been a topic that has been of recent interest to many people. And so what I'd like to say is that, you know, again, many families have expressed interest in having eighth-grade learners awarded high school credit for courses in world language and Algebra I in grade eight. I understand that request as a, as a parent of much older children, and administration is meeting very soon next week to explore how to make this possible. So we will review the district policy, which is in place, and I believe it permits this to happen. We will examine the curriculum to make sure it is aligned in the assessments. We will examine and/or establish, if needed, entrance criteria and criteria required for actually earning the credit. So the administration will work with Deb, our Assistant Superintendent, and we will communicate our determinations and next steps. I do look forward to a positive outcome on that. I also just want to point out some of the considerations because it's not an immediate decision. So, you know, we have to include the fact that we have to consider that not all learners are ready for Algebra I in eighth grade, and so placing learners inappropriately results in a wide variety of negative experiences, and so we have to carefully consider our selection and identification process because what is most important to us is the whole child first. And there are plenty of opportunities to explore rigorous math coursework throughout a child's career here in Brookfield. We have a lot of great courses offered. So it's also important that the curriculum is well-aligned with high school Algebra I and that they use the same level of rigor and assessments to ensure that the students are prepared and have mastered critical content required for future coursework. Also, students in grade eight would be required to take and pass a mid-year and end-of-year exam to achieve whatever the pre-identified class average would need to be earned in order to receive the credit. So there are pieces to this that we need to have in place, but I heard that we agreed to definitely look at it, and we seem to have all the pieces in place to make it happen. Whether it can happen this year or not, stay tuned. We want to do what's best for the learners, so. Also, just a few more things. The budget process is underway. All of the departments shared their comprehensive lists of wants and needs, and then we sent them off to prioritize. They have returned with some prioritization. Casey and I meet daily, if not multiple times a day, and review data, and we are trying to inform, inform the board of everything that was kind of asked for broadly, and then narrow it down to what we feel are the best items to try to move the district forward. You know, I think it's important that our community realize and celebrate the fact that this board recognizes their responsibility to balance the fiscal abilities within the town and community to pay, as well as their responsibility to support education, and the board takes this role very seriously, and that is deeply appreciated. Also, just another heads up, we were touching on this in policy, so I'm not going to go too deep into it, but at the administrative level, we continue our discussion of one-to-one device steps, and we will continue to apprise the board and the community of our progress in that respect. Really, what we are looking for is devices one-to-one for students that are issued from the district for use in the learning environment. So we're very busy aligning resources, including, you know, we might need a few more Chromebooks in the budget, although not that many, policies and processes in order to make this successful. A lot of steps need to be in place, a lot of communication, so there is more to come in that. So I also wanted to celebrate the elections. So board members are volunteers. I was, I am married to one who was a board chair and a board member for many years, and there is no pay for this job. And in fact, the pay you get is often the collaboration that you have with each other, the feeling that you have when you are participating in true community service. But it's also important for you to realize that your involvement signals to our students that you, bless you, that you value their education. Like, that is a gift that you are giving to our children and the families in our community. You are saying, I value your children's education enough to be here. And that is truly a gift that I, like, the administration and I really appreciate. Rosa, you will be missed. You know, you bring to this board in my short time here grace and conviction, and those are things that we all can aspire to, to model. Congratulations and gratitude are extended to our newly-elected board member, Caroline Kells. I had to, like, meet her before I could introduce her. And congratulations and gratitude are extended to our returning board members, Joy and Erin. So we do appreciate that you continue to keep your name in the bucket for consideration. Your dedication and commitment to our schools and community is truly appreciated, so. So also, you know, I have some additional thoughts on the calendar if needed. I'll share those later, but it's just a repetition. So I, you know, I want to end on the serious note, there is nothing that we take more serious than safety. We all feel horrible that anything could happen, and we did have a breach. And so really, to our communication, what it's important to the community to know is that we can only share so much, right? We are counseled by legal, we've, we met with the police chief, we met with the First Selectman, like, we've met, we've talked, we've debriefed, we've carefully vetted communications. There's only so much that we can say. You know, law enforcement is involved, was involved immediately, and, you know, so our key information that we will always share is confirmation of the incident, right? Something occurred, whatever it was, that something unauthorized, you know, somebody entered the building, or whatever the incident is, we will confirm it, and we will confirm that the situation is resolved. So that confirmation will always come. The actions that were taken will be briefly mentioned. If law enforcement is involved, they will often be mentioned, but that's often all we can say about that. Also, we will tell you resolution, right? This is how it was resolved, the person was removed, the building was secure, you know, law enforcement might be handling anything else. We have not followed up with our follow-up yet, it will come. And to reassure your safety, often, it's also a good time to remind everybody of our visitor policy, that everybody has to go through a certain door and be screened. So there are pieces, it's a common structure that we use. I know that you're never going to hear everything you want to hear, and I know that you're going to hear information from children that were there that we can't tell you. And I also can tell you with conviction that some of the information you're hearing is not correct, but I can't split hairs and tell you what is or is not correct. I can assure you that, you know, the small number of people that really needed more information, they felt, called the principal directly, and he either met with them in person or talked to them on the phone, because that personal contact is important and it's, it's significant. So there's not much more I can say on that, other than if there are people, and I know there are, that are still concerned, I encourage you to start with the, the principal and meet with him or call him. That's all for now.
Thank you very much. Okay, so moving to the superintendent's search update.
Yes, so based on feedback that we received from school leadership last week, we have some potential applicants that have not applied yet and that have just asked for more time. And so at the recommendation of our consultants, we've decided to shift the dates a little bit to give people through the holiday, the Thanksgiving holiday weekend, to get their applications in, speak with family, you know, consider commutes and moving, things like that. So knowing this is a busy time of year for everyone, it's also a busy time for anyone wanting to apply to the district, and we want to ensure that everyone that would like to be in our district is given the opportunity. So the new application deadline will be Thursday, December 4th. Applications will be given to the search committee on Friday, December 5th by the, our consultants. And then committee members will review the applications and school leadership's recommendations over that weekend and create the list of questions that the committee might have regarding applicants and recommendations. Then the search committee will meet with Rena and Roy, our consultants, virtually to go over who the committee wants to start interviews with on Monday, December 8th, and we will talk about time and date when we go in, when we have our next search committee meeting. So the 8th, nobody gave me feedback that the 8th wouldn't work, and so we just need to decide, like, what time we want to start. It's going to be virtually, and we can do that for, in the search committee meeting that we're going to have after this meeting. So then in-person interviews will likely be pushed to the beginning of January due to the holidays. However, I do have, we, I've given some dates in Rena and Roy, do have some availability. They have actually started the screening interviews, and so there may potentially be a few candidates ready to go in the next couple of weeks, or after, it would be after the 8th. So that week after the 8th, if we can, but again, we'll talk as, the search committee will talk and decide if, if there's any dates that we can give to Rena and Roy that week. And if not, that's okay. She said that pushing them to January is not a big deal, given that the holiday at that time is, you know, kind of a, it's going to delay things either way, right? So even if we can't get interviews in, we're not necessarily going to, we wouldn't be able to get all the interviews in. She did suggest that we do two or three at a time. We don't know how many they'll have for us, but we'll learn more when we meet with her on the 8th. And that's the update.
Thanks very much.
Stephanie, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Do we have to do anything logistically to do our new search committee?
Yes, so we will have, when, after Caroline has sworn in and Rosa moves on, we will give Caroline, we don't have to, like, swear or anything, we'll just give her the confidentiality agreement that we all signed. We'll put one of those on record for Caroline, and then the way that the meetings will work, she will be able, that was part of the other reason, is she'll be able to join that meeting on the, she'll get all the information on the 4th, and then she'll join the meeting on the 8th, so. Caroline, you should be writing all this down. I think I send it all to you, but, yeah, so that's all that has to happen.
Awesome. Okay, then are we ready to move to the subcommittee reports?
Aye.
Okay, so let's start off with the security task force.
Can we not?
Okay, then let's move it to facilities, please.
Sounds good. Good evening, everyone. I'll make sure I got it right, the time of this facility, except I'm doing my mic on. Facility, so, committee, we met on November 5th. It was myself, Stephanie, and Casey and Dan were there. We had public comment, we had resident Pam Kraus share comments about the Iroquois Pipeline extension, excuse me, expansion, and concerns about that. We went over our monthly facilities report, and we're doing a little bit differently. The report is available online, and you'll be able to see it all, so I'll give you, like, a nice concise, kind of like a big three like we do at the end, the things that were completed. We noted that the floor CLS have been successfully replaced, and that was a huge job that apparently looks outstanding from what I was told, and it's, it's working very well for now, and should be, I should say, continue to. The roof structure that we had the issue with, there was a, an infrared scan performed that unfortunately reveals significant leaks in the roof, which is also part of Capitol stuff that Kakese will be talking about later, and the leaks have gone down, significant water damage into, over the library at WMS. As for new business, we got a presentation of the Capitol projects. Ms. Deel will be presenting them tonight. We got a presentation of the 10-year Capitol Plan, which will also be presented tonight. And for old business, we discussed the A&E services and roof replacement projects. Casey provided an update as far as the progress in engineering design, and Ms. Deel also reported this work will be on hold until reviewed by the MBC. And I believe, that was it. We joined at 7:20 PM. It's a little bit of a long meeting.
Before we move on, can I just say, I really like this new format. Thank you, Mrs. Tenza, for suggesting it.
That's Casey.
And thank you, Casey.
Partnership.
Thank you, Casey and Vonda, for this. This is really helpful, I think.
I think it answered a lot of questions, too, that came in as far as, like, certain projects that will come in, coming in and certain worries, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Rob, I have a question. One of the things that we had talked about was talking to Wendy about possibly having like a board voice on the Iroquois Pipeline and talking more with Pam. Do we, do we land on what?
Not yet, but we can still discuss, yeah, we can discuss that, yeah, for sure. I know, I know you had mentioned it.
Yeah, because their main request is that, and Wendy, you had asked this of us, which is how it came forward.
For support.
How can we lend our voice? So that was all. I was just curious.
Actually, just on the heels of that, I mean, this will find expression later on, but there are a couple of town committees that are asking for a board membership. We talked about maybe you being on the calendar committee.
The what?
That, that we should maybe have a board member on the calendar committee, and, you know, Erin wasn't opposed to the idea, so.
It was her idea.
It was her idea.
I would be on it, too. I just don't know when they meet. It's usually during the day.
So that's something that we could talk about, and then also, there was a mention of the Town Wellness Committee.
District Wellness Committee.
District Wellness Committee wanting a board membership, so I think.
And the MBC really needs somebody else.
Wow. Okay, okay.
Because I can't answer much of what was going on.
So as we shape committees anew in, in December, this, this is something we should keep in mind. All right, are we ready to move then to the security task force?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Okay. So we last met on, whoops, I'm on the wrong agenda here, okay. We last met on the 30th of October, and we didn't have anything pressing to talk about, but we had wanted to meet to talk about the future direction of the committee, because unlike all of the other committees that have constantly ongoing work to kind of review and, and be, and be informed of as a board member as it relates to general board business, the security
board business, the security task force isn't really like that. Um, so, you know, we talked about, um, a while back, we had, we had addressed the, what were called the pillars of school security, which, you know, we often think about physical security and we think about security staff, um, but the pillars of school security also am, not only include physical, physical, but the techno, um, technology, yes, the staff, policy and practices, and mental health. And so, you know, we thought that the, the committee should really be cycling through each one of those pillars and thinking, what can we do best? How can we better improve the district? What resources might we need to put into each of these pillars? Um, and so, the committee did note some importance, um, in meaningful, um, professional development, definitely review of our practices and obviously our recent experience is exactly what we were talking about. Um, and so, in future committee meetings, um, I think it will be important for, for that committee to be briefed on, you know, some of the details of, of those breaches to see if there was, and by the way, the security task force is a real collective of community members, but also the police, um, and key leaders in the district. So, that will happen at the next, um, security task force meeting. Um, Chief Puglisi of the Brookfield Police Department also recommended, um, an additional full-time armed security position to act as a floater, um, or an additional resource, both really, um, to provide coverage when our SROs are out, um, but also as an additional resource when they are present. Um, any armed security personnel do fall under the purview of the Brookfield Police Department, but they will not add that person to their roster unless they have sort of the blessing of the board. So, um, it's not on the agenda for tonight, but I do recommend, um, just because Chief Puglisi needs to get his budget in order, um, to maybe at your next board meeting have an agenda item where you guys can vote on support for that if you choose. Um, but yeah, so that's what we would recommend and that's, that's essentially what we, um, that's essentially what we discussed, so.
Um, I have a question on, uh, item, the item C in new business, where you say, um, but will need to be supported by the board, is that, uh, by the Board of Education? So what does that mean? Does that mean that we approve of another armed officer in the schools and we give our blessing to that, to that, or does it mean that it's a line item in the budget?
It's not a line item in our budget, but it is, and it's less of an approval and more of like a blessing. So really, it's, it's really kind of like a, a cooperative arrangement with the superintendent and the Brookfield Police Department.
Okay.
So, the board just kind of gives its blessing in that it's part of. Yeah, that's what I suggest, yeah.
The other thing to note, Rosa, that we talked about, that Chief Puglisi wanted to make sure we knew is that, right now, if an SRO is out, someone comes in or an ASRO, like, one of his, um, someone covers that shift, right? Someone on duty covers that shift. And so, it's somebody who may not know the school, know the personnel, you know, it, the reason why he suggested this is because then it's a extra person who can float around, who can cover, who will get to know the school, who will get to know the administrators, who, you know, knows all the doors and schedule a little bit better. And there are times when two people are needed for an event or something like that. So it, it was, it's not, there is already coverage, someone is, like, if, you know, Officer, uh, Anderson is out at the CLES, someone does come in, but they don't know the school, they don't know the doors, they don't know the boundaries, and so this is a way for there to be a specific person who knows all three schools.
Right. Yep.
Um, who, who's in charge of the security minutes, like, do you write them?
I do.
Oh, yeah, okay. And we don't include, like, people that attend public comment or anything like that?
No, just similar to our board meetings, we didn't have public comment. Um, we did have on our last minutes, um, our discussion on ALIS training and we had a very long discussion actually at that meeting about ALIS training, about how we were not satisfied that it hadn't gone farther and that we wanted, you know, that to be a priority going forward. And so, and all of the administrators agreed and they were all.
Was it brought up to this last meeting or?
Not in this meeting, no.
Okay.
It wasn't on the agenda because it would have already been settled at the meeting before that, that we were gonna reprioritize that.
So what's the next pro, like, what's the proper steps for ensuring that happens?
I believe it's, it's more professional development for, it, it has to be, you know, well-constructed and coordinated professional development. So, we had asked, um, that, you know, time be set aside in teacher's schedules because, you know, stuff's gonna have to be rearranged, um, but that's what we had requested be done.
Is that something in our purview that we have to get on the agenda to approve? Or is it budget? Okay. So I think that's definitely like a sense of urgency.
Yeah, in the spring, right?
It was very like. Oh, it could've.
Yeah.
You could've, you could be right.
Debbie's saying yes. Okay. On the standard response protocol. Okay, good. So there was training done on, um, election day?
More to go, but we have started.
Great.
My training is happening, which is, is.
Yeah, yes.
I do wanna have one, 'cause ever since the security breach, I was definitely interested in, um, the security plan, so I know, obviously, it's been submitted, but I did look up and it says, "Each local and regional Board of Education in Connecticut must create, update and submit an annual school safety and security plan." So it does say we have to be involved in that and that's nothing that we've ever done.
We have, we've submitted an all-hazards plan every year.
No, I'm not saying we haven't submitted it, but it says that Boards of Education must create, update and submit.
I think what they mean by, I could be wrong, but I think what they mean by Boards of Education is the district. They don't mean literally us sitting around a table creating this plan.
I think we should definitely find that out.
That was one of the policies that, when Dr. Burrell was still here, that he had brought to us and it was one of the shipment and good policies that we actually updated. And I do remember there being a discussion about how it's not actually, like, the, the policy is that it, there needs to be a plan in place, but the board doesn't actually, like, vote on it, it's a plan that the district and the admin and the superintendent create. So we, there is a policy that I can't reference off the top of my head, but we can look at it and see if there's, like, a specific reason there, but.
I mean, I would think it would be important for us to be part of that process, for sure. Given that we're doing investments for security and things like that.
Well, to me, that is more of like the, that kind of comes down to at the district, or at the, um, the school level, the admin level. I think they're, we entrust them to put the all-plan in place and then, it was presented to us, so we do see it, we have access to it.
I think it's, yeah, I think it's more important that we ensure it's getting done.
Yeah.
Like, we, to hold admin accountable means, like.
To make sure it's.
Ensuring they're getting it done, not actually doing it.
Right, but in order to ensure it's getting done, I need to see the plan, you know? I, I don't think we've been presented with it, ever at a meeting.
We have.
Have to go back, but.
Maybe it was at the policy meeting, 'cause we had it from when we were updating the policy and it was presented at the meeting that.
I don't think so, but.
Also.
Through my notes, but I'm, I don't, I have to remember what the context about was.
We have to remember, too, the sensitivity of, um, documents that we review are public and so there's a necessary limit on how much detail is appropriate, um, to, for us to review, like, officially, you know, um, because some of that needs to be confidential. Okay, can we move to Cape then, please?
Okay.
Troy, thank you.
So, we met on November 12th. Uh, we did have public comment, Ms. Capone shared her concerns and asked about the rationale as to why students in middle school who take high school Algebra I or oral language in eighth grade are not awarded high school credit. We received a presentation, um, beginning of year data highlights on the work of the PLCs, um, from, kind of like elementary school, from Jane, Jim Fitzpatrick and Julie Vaughn. Um, and that, uh, presentation was linked into your minutes that you can, um, access. And we asked that there be follow-up in January with new updated scores and progress. We received an overview of the MTS mod, MTSS model from Deb Farias, which is also linked into your minutes. And Deb Farias reviewed the screening and placement process for newly registered students. With that, we reviewed policy number 5122 and we discussed a need to update this policy. So that's something for the policy committee to.
5122.
5122. And that was it.
Awesome, thank you. Um, how about finance?
Okay, um, we last met on the 13th of November, um, and we went over the October year-to-date financial report, um, you know, still month-to-month, small incremental changes. There's some areas of the budget that Casey's looking at most closely. Um, and i- in some difference to previous financial reports, at least the memo that we see, um, rather than give sort of a bottom-line number, we, during this meeting, um, took some time to kind of, uh, get used to not seeing sort of a bottom-line, but just seeing some really big areas of exposures, really big areas of savings and kind of just keeping an eye on those, because it is still very early in the year to kind of be making an estimate on where the budget is gonna land. Um, but, um, come April-ish, um, is when, you know, we decided that we really would like to kind of see where we're gonna land. Um, but, um, obviously, special education, because that is fully funded this year, which was great, um, it makes seeing some of those ins and outs much more manageable. So, that was really nice to see and we, we looked at that. Um, so, speaking of which, there were some very modest favorable changes there, but overall neutral, month-to-month in terms of special education out of district. Um, our teacher turnover, we are still about $17,000 short of the budget, budgeted targeted savings. Um, we still have two positions remained, uh, remain open right now, um, and we certainly have salary savings in some other areas. Um, of course, we have exposures in other areas, too, so, again, that kind of just goes into more of just keeping an eye on things as, as we go along. Um, we talked about the pay rate guidelines, um, so we reviewed the recommended pay rate changes, um, and discussed, um, the importance of obviously remaining competitive with our neighboring districts. Um, so, the, we did have some favor to present, um, to the full board at, um, either this meeting or the next, um, with a suggestion to revisit these again before the summer hirings start, um, in terms of, like, substitutes and teachers that do summer, um, teaching. Um, because we do wanna make sure that we're competitive when that, when those jobs get posted. Um, so there is, um, is there something on the agenda for tonight for that?
No.
No, it's not, okay.
It's under the consent agenda.
Yeah, okay, so.
Oh, yes, yes, yes.
Yes, okay, it is, okay. So, when, um, when we approve these particular pay rate guidelines, they do increase, um, the pay and they definitely match with the increase, um, increasing minimum wage that is taking effect in January. Um, so, that keeps us up to date there, um, but we, as a committee, decided it's still not maybe quite where we want it to be. So, these at least keep us more up to date, but, again, it should be something that's revisited in the spring before, uh, some of the summer hiring starts taking place. Um, so that's just something to keep in mind, is it's on the consent agenda. Um, we did mention, um, adult meal prices have to increase a very small amount, um, and then we did a budget tra, our, our budget transfers, which is, um, something that we're doing for the first time ahead of the 26, 27 budget, because it's really, it'll be really nice, we can actually look at the budget and kind of compare apples to apples. So, we did some budget transfers, or we approved some budget transfers, um, so that it kind of trues up the budget, um, so that we're really looking at, um, again, apples to apples when we, when we see our new budget for next year, so, or when you see your new budget for next year.
Can I add one thing?
Please.
Rosa, thank you. Um, it's regarding the pay rate guidelines, because I think it was a, it was a really good point that was brought up about our competitiveness with, um, substitute, like, the daily substitute rates that we have. And so, um, the committee did, um, charge me with, you know, coming back with an analysis of what that, no, no, it's a, it's an important, important to do it. Um, and I think it probably will be sooner than the spring, because if, if we are gonna start maybe on, like, a July 1 with a new substitute rate, that will have budget, budgetary impacts for the 26, 27 budget. So, I'll be working on that sooner rather than later, so that by the time we, you know, get the budget, um, for your approval, um, that, that would be incorporated in there if the board, um, would move in, in, and increasing those rates.
And we'll also be looking at, um, summer school.
Yep.
Staff, too, correct?
Yeah, so that's a little bit more tricky, because that's part of, um, the CBA with the teacher's contract, um, and I, that, that is on the agenda, we can s- speak to that, but there's more work to be done in sort of that appendix area of the contract, so, um, yeah.
Great.
Thanks. All right, and now the update on the youth commission. Sarah?
Sure, um, so they just had a meeting on November 7th and it was the first meeting after the municipal candidate forum, which was super successful in October. Um, and they already went through, kind of debriefing on how it went and wanting to look at what went well and what areas of improvement there are. So, some of those are the types of questions that they wanna come up with, with, for next time, less yes, no type questions and more where they needed to include examples, things like that. And also, they've talked about how to reach out to other boards, like land use and things like that, so because that would not be, that would've taken hours upon hours to include everybody there, they're trying to think of other formats where they can actually talk to those, to, to additional boards that were not part of the forum in October. Um, there's also discussions about community asset-building ideas and those, a couple of ideas have been tossed around, um, science fairs, spelling bees, um, one of the ones I like is a lot, is the mentorship between WMS and, um, students at the high school and then, um, possibly getting elected officials to be more available to students during school and possibly attend youth commission meetings, um, improved foreign exchange programs and improved technical education. Um, they're already discussing plans for the career fair, which will be in March, and then, um, on the consent agenda, we're talking about, um, Senor Davila is, has resigned, but some good news, um, that he is going to be recommended as an alternate member to return to the youth commission, um, and that's, so that's going up in December and he was one of the advisors earlier on, so he's been a part of the youth commission for a while, so that's good news.
When are those meetings, the youth commission?
First Friday of the month.
Thanks. All right, speaking of youth, Emily, your turn, how are things?
Thank you, okay. So, um, I hope so, I think so. Um, we had a very successful Veterans Day this year. We hosted four veterans on our panel where they shared their experiences about their time during the service and also offered a full day of documentaries that highlighted the different components of the military service and contributions that our veterans provide for our country. And the entire day was run and facilitated by the members of the student government and the student government is working with athletic advisory to host the second annual Powderpuff Game versus Bethel. I'm actually gonna be a part of that, I, it's gonna be a lot of fun, I know it, we're gonna beat them, but. Um, the leadership team from our athletic advisory and student government met with student leaders from Bethel High School and they worked to develop, like, the guidelines for the game. It's gonna be on Monday, November 24th at 7:00 PM, so, uh, at BHS, it's gonna be at our home turf, so it's gonna be a good one. Um, the, uh, November 24th at 7:00 at Brookfield High School. Yes, you guys gotta, you guys gotta be here. Oh, we will. Um, the experience highlights the ideal that athletic advisory and student government collaborate and work on their leadership together. And in December, student government is working on a few upcoming projects, including the Winter Spirit Week and the pep rally. And also, I've said this last meeting, but they're doing the field trip to, club council is, to the Capitol Building in Hartford to do a mock legislative session hosted by Cassie, which I think sounds amazing. They're also hosting gingerbread house competitions for ILTs this winter and just a reminder that this is like the forty, fortieth year of the graduation party and they really need volunteers and donations from families and the communities in order to keep it running. So for anyone, like, watching or listening, please consider helping out the grad party to set up or donate. The seniors are very excited this year and we really hope that the grad party can continue for future generations and, like, prosper again, 'cause I heard the stories of how they once were and they're bigger and they're slowly, like, declining as, um, time goes on, but I really hope that it can still, like, revamp it and become really powerful again, right? That's it, thank you, guys.
It's a piggyback off that, little plug there. Um, there is an Amazon wishlist if anybody wants to donate for the seniors, um, we're not doing senior baskets anymore, but you can still make a basket for, um, the grad party, where you could just get items, general items for seniors.
No more senior baskets?
No.
Okay.
I feel like it's taking away from the grad party, but if you wanna still make a basket, you can, but it would be like a general one.
Gotcha, gotcha.
Be raffled off of the grad party.
And Emily, that is how you use the bully pulpit. Nice job. Um, okay, so consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the items, I move that the board approve the items on the consent agenda as recommended. New hires, transfers, adult lunch meal price at 5:25.
What? dollars and twenty-five cents, I should be accurate, October financials, pay rate guidelines and budget transfers.
Is there any discussion of the consent agenda?
No, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Davila for all of his service and being a wonderful teacher. Good luck in Danbury and I thank him for, you know, inspiring my daughter to now be a multilingual teacher because of him. We will miss him.
I can in this instance say ditto. All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so it's unanimous, wonderful. So moving to new business. Prioritized one-year capital projects, we are going to hear from Mrs. Diott.
Thank you. All right, good evening, everybody. This time of year, every year, since I've been here, I come before you and present what the upcoming capital requests will be as presented and recommended by the Facilities Committee at the last meeting. And so that's where we, that's where we are today and I don't know how to work this. Okay, here we go. I just want to start by recognizing in the last two years, the commitment that the Brookfield community really and Brookfield taxpayers have shown towards Brookfield public schools. They have contributed and invested in our schools a little over four point five million dollars in capital improvements to primarily to the high school and the middle school. And out of all of those projects that have been approved, roughly seventy percent of them are either, you know, in progress or completed or, you know, preliminary work has begun. Everything from boiler replacements, cafeteria floor replacements, roof replacements and server upgrades. So all of that work does still continue and we are extremely grateful to the Brookfield taxpayers and community, so thank you for that. So this year, priorities are focusing on three main areas. Essential technology upgrades, safety and compliance and infrastructure preservation. And I'm going to get into each one of those briefly, more so with the infrastructure preservation, that's roof replacements and that is really the bulk of the investment request that we are asking for this year. But the other two are also priorities. As you recall, in the original ten-year plan, each year there was investments in unit ventilators and sections of roofs and rooftop units and, you know, year over year. All of those other priorities have shifted to make room for these three main requests this year. In terms of technology upgrades, the switches, so I'm learning. Every building has a whole bunch of switches that makes all of the internet and the computers and the, you know, the servers and wireless access points all connected and work efficiently and securely. The useful life of those is typically between seven and ten years. Ours at the high school are about eight years old this, not about, they are eight years old this year, so they are due to be replaced. The cost of that, Mr. Conklin did get a quote, it's just under five thousand dollars per switch, so that they are, you know, not inexpensive and the high school needs twenty-five switches or twenty-six switches to be replaced. So that total ask is about, is a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The good news here is that fifty percent of this cost would be eligible for E-rate reimbursement so that the net cost to the town would be sixty-five thousand dollars. This is really a critical infrastructure. We don't want to wait until these start failing because really we would be, we would be stuck in the mud operationally in the building if that were to happen. So that's the technology upgrade. Safety and compliance, this is related to the parking lot and driveway at Whiskaneer Middle School. And there's, there's three, three pieces to this investment. Number one, the paving. Originally, the understanding or the thought at least was that this parking lot area may be included in the work that was done with taking down the portables and the field work back there. It's my understanding that is not in, in that budget, so this is why the request is coming forward now and had not been in that ten-year plan previously. Grateful to DPW, this fall, they did go and fill some of the larger potholes that were in that area, but as you can see in some of these pictures here, there's, it's called alligator cracking, where it sort of all like cracks out and so this needs to be replaced. In this area over here where the aerial is, there is an underground oil tank that is due to be replaced, so we are getting a firmer quote on that. That is the one estimate in this, in this entire capital request list that I don't have a firm number on. We did have a vendor come out and take a look at, at this area and the one at BHS, which we already have secured funding for. He's working on getting a more, more precise quote, but he said the range for these replacements are anywhere from three hundred and twenty-five thousand to five hundred and fifty thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The one at Whiskaneer, he said, is much more straightforward just based on the location than the one at the high school, so I, I'm doing a placeholder of four hundred thousand dollars for this one at Whiskaneer, but certainly we can upgrade, update this ask as that number gets refined. All right, now we get to the, the infrastructure preservation. We have secured over the last two years, funding for roofs, both at the high school and the middle school. And forgive my color, my highlighter coloring, couldn't figure out how to do it on a computer. So, but the color codes here, so the yellow sections down here, this is one being the library, which I think we all know very well is in dire need of being replaced. And the section R, which is classrooms, those two roofs already have funding available and we are working on getting those RFPs out for the engineering designs. This section here in green is the new ask for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget cycle. That is the area where the language lab is. These pictures here are actually from the language lab and it's getting increasingly worse, there are some workstations that can't be used because of the infiltration of water, so that is the highest priority at, at the high school right now. This pink section is roughly the same age as this, the green section that we're requesting this year, but there's not as, nearly as many issues, so the, the suggestion there is that we phase replacements of that larger section over the following three years. And then this orange section here, this was replaced in two thousand and eight, so that is further down in the ten-year plan, which you'll see, and then everything else is outside of the, the ten-year window. All right, so what does this look like? Again, as I said, we've already secured funding in prior years and so the ask for this year is three hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars for the high school. This is based on a thirty-four dollar per square foot cost, which is, which is a number that we just received, we received very recently from an architect that's looking at this. It's for a single ply TPO roof type, which is high energy rated for flat roofs. It stands for, and I hope I don't, I get this right, it's thermoplastic polyolefin, I think. And so that, just, just to be totally transparent on, you know, what these numbers represent, that is the type of roof and the cost that is being represented here. So the request, again, three hundred and ninety-one thousand five hundred dollars for the high school roof section. Whiskaneer, this looks a little bit different. There are some solar projects that are happening, actually at the school buildings, they've been approved. At the high school, a solar canopy over the student parking lot at CLES, it's on the top of the roofs, which that building was designed for solar, so that is very straightforward. At Whiskaneer, it's a little bit differently, different because of the age of the roofs. And so this ask for Whiskaneer is accelerating essentially the replacement of almost all of the, the rest of the roof structure at Whiskaneer in order to accommodate that solar project. So what does that look like? We have already secured funding in these yellow sections for Whiskaneer, seven hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars in the last two years for those, those sections of roof. This section over here, section B, this is the small gym. If you recall, we had that roof actually fail over the, in a, during a storm this past winter and it, so that was, that has been replaced already, so that one's good to go. And this other section was up here in the upper right corner, that was replaced during the macroburst in two thousand and eighteen, so that's out of the window. But all of these sections in green here is what we are proposing that we replace in this upcoming, upcoming budget cycle. This picture over here is what the proposed solar arrays look like for the solar project. So you can see it's the majority of the roof sections at the, at the middle school. The request for, to do this is two point, two, two million, three hundred and twenty-two thousand, six hundred dollars. And that, and that is to, you know, again, to accommodate the, the need for the solar project. But these roofs would have to be replaced next summer in order to qualify, in order for the solar project to move forward at Whiskaneer and to qualify for the investment tax credit. Each of the solar projects are standalone projects, so the other two solar projects are not contingent on, on Whiskaneer roofs being replaced, only Whiskaneer, the Whiskaneer solar project is contingent on the Whiskaneer roofs. And so that is the ask for Whiskaneer now.
Sorry to interrupt, Casey, but what's the year, what's the year on those, that section of roof, the green?
Most of those roofs were done in two thousand, so they are all outside of their, you know, out, at the end of their useful life, twenty-five years, probably give or take, couple. So the bright side of this. All roof replacements do qualify or they typically do, you may apply through the school construction grant program for non-priority reimbursement on these projects. Brookfield's reimbursement rate for construction projects are, are general construction projects is thirty-three point nine three percent. So if we were to combine all of the funding that we have already secured and the new ask for the funding of the roofs, subtracting out the architectural and engineering design costs because to be conservative, let's just say that may not qualify for reimbursement, so we're just talking about the actual construction of the roof projects itself. Brookfield would be eligible for a little over one point four million dollars in reimbursement at that reimbursement rate. When you get this project, this presentation emailed to you, you'll see up here, these are all links to more information about the non-priority grant reimbursement program and the applications and Brookfield's reimbursement rate and all that stuff, so you can, maybe when you're not sleeping again, Erin, you can look at their information instead of policy.
Like sitting here, I'm like, can we apply for the grant twice? This is what you're going to talk to the municipal building committee about though, right? This portion of the roofs?
Well, about what?
Like the roof stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, absolutely. The NBC has, because part of the requirement for applying for the non-priority grants through the state of Connecticut is that the Board of Selectmen approve three very specific resolutions. One being that they authorize the superintendent to even apply for the grant. Number two, that they appoint the municipal building committee to oversee the project. And number three, that they authorize at least the design schematics of the project itself. So those resolutions have been passed by the Board of Selectmen, so the NBC has been appointed to this project. So let's get back to, did that answer your question?
No, now it makes sense.
Okay, good.
Because I was hearing about roofs last night and I had no idea what they were talking about, so.
Here we go. And so this is the, the one pager sort of of requests for the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget cycle. And so the total request for the high school for the roof and the switches is five hundred and twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars. Whiskaneer, again, like I said, that roof replacement is, is the big number there at the two, two point three million, but the total request for Whiskaneer is three million and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred dollars. This is a much higher ask than has been presented in the last two years. However, when you do factor in the reimbursement at the thirty-three point nine three percent, which by the way, is the reimbursement that Brookfield has been eligible for, for the last three fiscal years, so it's been, it looks pretty steady. That does bring down the net capital request much more in line in what the requests have been the last few years, which is two million, one hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and seventy-eight dollars. This is, I know you can't read this, but you have a hard copy in your hand. This is the ten, the ten-year capital plan and I just wanted to make sure you're seeing that, you know, everything else is still in there, we just shifted down a year. And there was a request at the finance committee meeting that we really make sure everything gets in there, right? So you'll see that, yes, we did just purchase a floor scrubber for the high school, but you see ten years from now, it's in there again because they have a, you know, expected useful life of about ten years. So everything's in here. The one highlight in yellow at the bottom is really important just to keep in mind and it is something that, you know, we have been talking about every time we talk about capital, which is this, the upgrade to the HVAC system at the high school. So the heating and air conditioning, right, the, the temperature of our classrooms impacts learning, it does. And the, the heating system at the high school is, is, is very outdated. It is a steam system and it makes it, it is very highly inefficient and it makes it very difficult to control consistently temperatures across the building. And so we are looking at upgrading that, that whole system and incorporating air conditioning into all the areas of the building that don't have air conditioning. We do have an RFP out just for the design services of that, of that project. Funding for the design services was approved in prior capital budget cycles. But that cost, I don't want anybody, anybody to be shocked, that cost could be very, very expensive, upwards of five to ten million dollars. And that is not in this ten-year capital plan. It's a very high number, it's a much smaller number though than building a new school building, right? So keeping that in mind, but that, I just want everybody to, to, you know, keep in the back of your mind that that number is not in this total that we see. Page two of this, you see Whiskaneer and Candlewood Lake has some technology upgrades and they have a floor scrubber in there because they need one too in, in seven years now. And, and that's it, that is the request. This is the one pager that has all of the links to the Mark Secubo building condition study, all of their cost estimates, the previous year capital, you know, one-year capital requests and a link to the ten-year capital improvement plan. So are there any questions?
Yeah, Casey, is, for any of the roof replacements, are we building in contingency costs or no?
So it's thirty-four, thirty-four dollars a square foot plus a ten percent. I did do a ten percent on top of that.
Ten percent?
Yep.
Okay. Yeah, my concern is, right, we're doing so many roof projects, but yet really what, you know, the priority is, the HVAC is definitely a, a high priority. I'm just concerned that the roof projects are being pushed because of the solar project and we have some real serious needs for our facilities. So I'm, I'm not as, asking you to comment on that.
Yep.
It's not really questioning, it's more a comment, but what have we shifted due to putting the rooftop, roof replacements as a priority? What have we shifted to either twenty twenty-seven, twenty twenty-eight or further down the road?
Yep, so I essentially took, so do you see, so we'll focus on the high school. So the unit ventilators, we have had a placeholder to replace unit ventilators year over year. I'm not, we're not proposing that in twenty-six, twenty-seven, so it just, it just shifted a year. The windows also, I believe they were initially proposed to begin in the twenty-six, twenty-seven cycle. To be totally honest with you, the, if the roofs are, if we can't stop the infiltration of the water coming in in some of these areas, that's first and foremost in my mind, it doesn't matter what else is going on inside. And so, so that's why we, we're moving in this direction. But essentially, I think the, the lighting. To be totally honest with you, the, if the roofs are, if we can't stop i- it, the infiltration of the water coming in in some of these areas, um, that's first and foremost in my mind. It doesn't matter what else is going on inside. And so, so that's why we, we were moving in this direction. But essentially, um, I think the, the lighting upgrade at the high school that was shifted, and I think I even shifted that out another year. And I can get you the, the previous ten-year capital plan, so you can see very specifically the changes. But I think I shifted that another year out even because, um, of the impact on the overall. I'm trying to keep it as smooth as possible. I don't want, you know, I mean, I know this year goes up, you know, over three million dollars. Fortunately, we do have that ream, reimbursement that we could, um, get for those roofs, um, to bring it back more in line. But I'm trying to keep everything, you know, as, in line as, you know, around two million. And you'll see at the bottom, the bottom line ask, um, after year, um, we're at this high mark here at the three point five. Then it goes down to one point six, one point six, one point six, and then it really does trail off. Again, the HVAC upgrade is not in there, right? So.
Right. That's my worry.
Yeah.
And we did make a commitment to, you know, improving the restrooms. You know, we said we're going to do some every year.
Yep.
So we obviously pushed that, because we don't have any, at least for the high school. Yeah, that's definitely a concern, for sure. For the Wiscanear roof replacement, are we having substantial leaking at the, at Wiscanear?
Yes.
And is all, is it all those sections or just?
Yeah, so there are, um, several sections of that building that have, uh, that have had leaks for several years, year over year, particularly in the library. That is where, um, when Robert mentioned that the infrared scan was done. There are a couple of sections in that building that we have had vendors come out and repatch and rework and, and we're, and we're spending this money to try to stop this leak, um, that continuously finds its way in. So that's why we did this infrared scan to say, show me exactly what we need to be looking at. And the pictures.
I was going to say, did you, I don't see the pictures included, did you?
Of the infrared?
Yeah.
I didn't include them in the ca, the capital presentation?
Or the facilities committee, if you could see them.
Yeah, they, um, it's vast, right, in that area. Um, and so that a hundred percent needs to be, um, needs to be replaced. Um, and that's a large, that is section L, um, at Wiscanear. That's sort of right in the center of the building. All of the other roofs are right around the same age. So in areas that are not leaking today, I can't tell you that they won't be leaking in six months. Um, and it's, it's sort of like one of those things where you don't want to wait until it's got to be done tomorrow. Because then, you know, we're, we're fighting buckets and collecting water. Um, and that's not ever something that we want to, we want to do. Certainly, the plan originally was to phase these roofs at Wiscanear over three years. But again, with the other, other factors weighing in, this is what, um, this is what's being proposed. Any other questions?
With that, um, Stephanie, would you like to make the motion?
Maybe. There you go. I move that the board approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven, one-year prioritized capital projects list as recommended by the facilities committee and director of business and operations, Casey Diott.
A second.
Is there further discussion on this?
Just one other quick question. So how does that work with the HVAC upgrade? We're waiting till eleven-twenty-six, but we're approving this now.
So we, so we, that will have to be a standalone project. And I don't have a cost on that, um, because like I said, it's going to be multiple millions of dollars.
Right, so standalone project, meaning it's not going to be part of the capital project?
Well, it would be a capital, it would be, certainly be a capital project, but.
That would be like a referendum, no?
Yeah, well, or, or during the.
Or brought to us.
During the, um, budget cycle, depending on, you know, when it, when it comes about. But I don't, I don't have a cost on that.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I'm hoping by, because we do have an RFP, um, it is extended, because the vendors that, uh, did the walkthrough, they had more questions and wanted more time to, to prepare something, um, thorough. And again, that's just the RFP for the design services, um, which we then would go out to bid, to have vendors say, okay, this is what you want to happen. How much, I'll give you a proposal on how much that's going to actually cost. So that second RFP will determine what we think that cost to do the HVAC upgrade will be. Maybe we will get that, um, before, you know, the, during this budget, at some point during this bu, budget cycle. But we'll have to, we'll have to wait and see. I, I, I don't know that not doing the roofs will impact the HVAC or vice versa, because they're both, they're both really important infrastructure components. Um, and the roofs, you know, if, if, if I thought that the roofs had maybe five or six more years on them, but they are at the twenty-five year mark, they're out of, they're all out of warranty. And so, um, yeah, that's why this proposal is here. Can I, sorry, one, one other thing that is actually good news. HVAC projects, uh, previously did not qualify on the non-priority list for, uh, reimbursement with the state of Connecticut. It was a standalone grant that was out for several years, um, a couple of years, and then it, it had gone away. It is now part of the non-priority, uh, you know, reimbursement, um, with the state. And so an HVAC upgrade could qualify for that reimbursement for general construction. So that is good news.
So all we need are some RFPs to come in that seem reasonable.
Yes.
Maybe we could change the conversation.
Yeah, and, and I did, we did ask the RFP that was put out for the design, did ask for, um, specing it out as a one-time cost or a phased approach for a project of that scope to, to see really what we could, you know, what's manageable for the town, so.
Other points of discussion?
Hi, thank you for rearrange, the way you've rearranged it, you know, kind of does give us that nice, like, at least even predictability. And I appreciate you planning this without, you know, kind of allows us to do everything we want, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Great, um, all in favor of approving the prioritized, uh, one-year capital project approval as presented by Mrs. Diott? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Joy. All right, so that passes six one. Okay, moving next to the, um, BEA contract.
I move that the board approve the successor contract between the Brookfield Board of Education and the Brookfield Education Association.
Second.
Okay, is there discussion on this?
Somebody just hit the highlights? Do we have something?
So, um, the, the, the big, big features are, and I, I may have the, the, um, numbers wrong, because I don't have them in front of me. But the teachers, um, the teachers, uh, are getting a, a, overall fourteen percent, um, increase over three years. And for that, um, the students of Brookfield and families of Brookfield are getting, um, fifteen minutes of what's called wrap time. So, um, teachers currently can leave, um, school when the students do. And, um, the teachers have agreed in this contract to extend their working day an extra fifteen minutes. And in some jobs, that might not sound like a very big deal, but in this case, it's going to have a profound impact, particularly at CLES, where teachers, um, will be able to, or the, the administration will be able to manage, kids getting onto buses, you know, dismissal, uh, process without, um, encroaching on, um, without such an encroachment on instructional time. And, um, given the fact that we, uh, really prioritize instructional time in student learning, this is extremely meaningful for the board. So that's, for me, that was the big, big takeaway. Joy, did you have a, anything that you wanted to share?
The stipends, we worked the.
Oh, yes.
We have a stipend committee that's working through.
Continuation of the appendix.
We're going to continue working through, uh, stipends. And we were able to, what's been happening for a, a long time is, um, how to prioritize and how to separate sports from clubs. And that was one of the things that we accomplished was their, uh, they can be worked on separately. So everybody agreed that sports, that athletics is, um, a separate stipend sheet. They stay the same rates for now, the continue, the, um, committee continues to work on that.
So, um, for the people who are part of the negotiations team, um, I, it's, it's important that you know that, um, some negotiations take a lot of time. And, um, especially when it's a really big, uh, contract, as with the BEA. And, um, Stephanie and Joy volunteered to be part of an ad hoc negotiations group with some select members of the BEA representation. And they met additional, many, many hours to hammer out, um, updated version of the stipended, stipend plans. And so that's, that's what Stephanie was talking about. So, um, thanks very much to the BEA leadership and negotiations team, including the people who devoted extra hours, um, to ironing out the stipends. It, it was a lot of work. You guys, um, did a lot of math together. And, um, we really appreciate that modernization of that part of the, the contract and the school experience for our kids.
Thank you to the committee.
It's always a pleasure.
Doing all that work.
Yep, yep. Okay, um, other, um, discussion or questions about the contract? All right, um, all in favor, oh, wait, did you make the motion? You didn't make the motion again. All right, all in favor, um, of approving it, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, so it's unanimous. Great, let's move to old business now. So this has gotten a lot of attention.
Do you want me to go through the feedback?
Yes, so we're, we're going to talk about the, um, setting the graduation date. Actually, could we start with?
I think we should get a motion on the table.
Okay, let's, okay. And then, um, will we hear from Emily first?
Yeah, we can hear from Emily first, that's great. Okay, so, uh, I move that the board approve the graduation date for the class of twenty-twenty-six as recommended by Brookfield High School Principal, Mark Belanda.
Second.
What is the graduation date?
He recommended June twentieth.
Yeah, sorry.
It wasn't, they, they should have been in there, but.
All right, so, um, me and Mr. Belanda just created a Google form that we sent, um, like, it was an optional form, but really like recommended, um, to the Brookfield High School seniors. And we let them know of the situation, about which date, the twentieth or the twenty-seventh, they'd prefer. We got, our result is, so fifty-six percent of the kids wanted it on June twentieth. But I think that's very skewed, because, um, there was a mistake in the form where if someone could do multiple responses. And I looked at the timestamp and one person was very eager to have it on the twenty-seventh. And they wrote like twenty responses. And I did the math, so that means that it would be, only twenty-five percent of people would, would have wanted it on the twenty-seventh. So I would leave with seventy-five, a greater majority wanting it on the twentieth.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, and they were able to, um, offer their like, um, just questions or comments on what they think. And I know there's a lot of things about, oh, I have like a tournament that the next, the twenty-seventh. And there's a lot of prior, just conflicts. Yes, yes, on the twenty-seventh. So that's, that's all I got with that. I could off, offer my personal, um, is it a thing?
Yeah, absolutely, that's what I hear.
I think definitely that the twentieth would be most ideal, because I just don't see us getting three full days off, like, of weather-related things. And even if we do, like, I know Mr. Blanda will work around it. So finals can be just more condensed and, or moved earlier. So I just think that the twentieth makes more sense. I know a lot of people go on vacation right after school and then they'll just miss graduation or families. And it's just, once we get into that summer, everyone's already checked out. I just think, it's just better for everyone if we just stick with the twentieth, but, yeah.
And then it's time for the grad party to get set up, right?
Yes, a hundred percent. And we definitely kept that in mind when we, when we talked. So we had that in mind Friday, the whole day, all to themselves, yeah.
So we will not be doing the snow dance?
Sure.
No.
All right.
That was also, um, Mr. Belanda's recommendation in the letter that I gave out.
Right, in bold.
Yes.
Okay. Other, uh, discussion? Are you guys ready to vote then?
Well, except for we need to remake the motion. Because there's an actual date set in the motion.
We should have had the date in, in the motion.
Okay, let's make a new motion.
I'm going to rescind, oh, I'm not on. Okay, there you go. So I'm going to rescind the previous motion. And I move that the board approve the graduation date of Saturday, June twentieth, twenty-twenty-six, for the class of twenty-twenty-six as recommended by Brookfield High School Principal, Mark Belanda.
Second.
Any further discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it's unanimous. And, um, class of twenty-twenty-six, now you know what to plan for, that's great.
What to plan for, yeah.
Okay, so, um, then this next item is the approval of the school calendar.
I move that the board approve the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven school calendar as recommended by the calendar committee.
Second.
Right, so yeah, now that the motion's on the table, um, this is one that we, um, we got a lot of feedback on this. So do you want to share some of that data now?
Yep. So, uh, in email responses, like I said, we had nineteen email responses. Not everybody answered every question. They answered, you know, what was important to them, and there were some sort of caveats thrown in. So the biggest, um, thing we were curious about was did, should school start the week before Labor Day? So typically, that's the last week in August. In the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven calendar year, it happens to be, uh, September first, because Labor Day is the following weekend. So the question was not just about next year, but about, you know, going forward. Um, and it is evenly split amongst responses. Next year specifically, all responses were to keep it as is, even though it's technically before Labor Day. That's the right week to start school, because pushing it to the seventh feels, uh, too late, based on then when school would end. So they like the date for next year. Going forward, it's pretty evenly split on should it start before Labor Day or should it start after Labor Day? The arguments were, as we've discussed here, um, the argument for before Labor Day is that's when, uh, surrounding schools start. And, um, you know, it's easier for, because camps end and childcare. The reason for after Labor Day, uh, the parents who wanted it to be after Labor Day like the extra time, uh, like the downtime, um, with their kids. They like the extra week of summer, they like to be able to go away, um, Labor Day weekend. So that was that. Should snowdies be built into the calendar and taken off if not needed? Again, split response, um, yes and no. They're the valid, again, all the reasons we talked about. The reason why to build them in is because it helps sort of plan the end of the school year. But, oh, and there were a lot of people who didn't answer the question who said it doesn't matter. They plan accordingly either way. So I don't feel like there was enough passion for that topic to make it something that we, you know, adopt as a policy moving forward as a board. The calendar committee thinks that, you know, a hundred and eighty-two days school year, and then if we need to add them on, that seems to be consensus amongst everyone. So, um, there isn't really any, you know, necessarily anything there that's groundbreaking. The religious holidays off. So again, this was evenly split. Reasons given, for the most part, for no religious holidays, uh, should be off, is because accommodations should be made, um, for all religious holidays. As we've discussed, it should be all or nothing. Absences should be accommodated, obviously, with the, um, you know, for those that do need to take it off. But the bigger issue is the middle-of-the-week disruption. It's harder for parents to get childcare. The, um, instruction, uh, you know, consistency of instruction, as we've talked about, is really difficult. Having a Thursday off and trying to get the kids back to school on a Friday. So those are the reasons why, uh, the parents who responded that no, we should have no religious holidays, which means no Good Friday, no Yom Kippur and Rosh Hashanah, no, no Rosh Hashanah. All three of those days would be in-school days. The other argument is this is current practice in other districts. And then there was a lot of feedback that said, um, what, and that asked, and Joy, you had sent an email late in the day. What is the demographic of our district? And can we use that to determine how, what kind of population of our students that affects? We've talked about in the past and last year, um, how the Muslim population doesn't have any of their days off. And so that accommodates, um, you know, we accommodate absences for that. The, some of the feedback was should we shift to that model, uh, for Jewish and Christian holidays as well? And then, of course, the, the feedback for yes, having them off, is that these are important dates and it's difficult for those that have to miss, um, to then keep up with instruction. So I think it seems to be a reasonable comp, a reasonable compromise, based on the feedback might be, to not have them be days off, but also make sure the instruction in school, um, is accommodating to make sure their, you know, the chunk of students that would, uh, be off those days don't miss a significant amount.
So that presents a minor challenge then for administrators to make sure that the staff is cognizant of religious holidays that may not be their own.
Oh, and one piece of feedback, sorry, along those lines are, um, accounting for staff members that may.
Yes.
Need to take the day off or may want to take the day off. That we should not change next year's calendar, that we should do more, the calendar committee, um, maybe should look at surveying or ma, ensuring that their instructional interruption isn't just having the day off and then, you know, having to get, having a day off in the middle of the week. It might also mean not having the staff to, um, be able to service the students in school. So perhaps the calendar. So, perhaps the Calendar Committee could find out, or the superintendent could find out, you know, is this going to be a significant disruption to staff? How many staff members would take those days off as religious holidays? And if that means we're going to be short on subs and, you know, then, then it's disruption in a different way and school disruption, perhaps it's not worth it. So, that was the other feedback that I had gotten.
So, in, in hearing this or in reading this today and yesterday, I think, I was wondering if you guys and if the administration thought it might be a good idea to table this particular item as you pursue those answers? Or do you feel like you guys are ready to, to vote on this?
I mean, I'm next, right? So, I saw it yesterday and, you know, we have a Calendar Committee in place. And, you know, they did their due diligence and put this together, you know. And now, today, you know, I get out of work to nineteen messages about the calendar. So, you know, I'm feeling kind of, you know.
Well, to that point and based, yeah, and to that point and based on the feedback, I feel like, and it is important to note, one of the things I did mention in the, you know, in the ask to the public is there's only one Jewish holiday off next year. One of them, I think it's Rosh Hashanah, falls on a Saturday. So, it seems reasonable that the calendar can be approved as is for next year with only one instructional day being disrupted. And then having everything shift to- Good Fridays, it is, but it's a Friday. So, I think the feedback on that was like, well, it's a Friday, so it's like not, you know, yes, it should not, no, instructionally, so there should be no religious holidays off. But the feedback, like specifically the people that feed, that had feedback on Good Friday was it's a Friday, so it's not as big, I know. I'm just saying that that's, that there are more people that had less of a problem with Friday. Because, but I do agree that we should look at, based on the feedback and the discussions we've had of prob, you know, possibly having no religious holidays off going forward after next year's calendar year. So, we would continue to have the two-
What I think, how big of a deal is it to go and procure that kind of information, like from our staff? Like, is that even like, can we legally ask this stuff, like?
I know, right?
Okay, so I, through the chair. Okay. You know, I'd like to start by saying I, I appreciate this conversation. I have heard this conversation replicated in other boards recently, even under my own purview. And it's a hard conversation because you want to be respectful to community, so I want to honor that. So, the, setting the calendar is one of the board's responsibilities. So, it's under your purview. And in this case, I think, to Erin's point, you, you charged a committee, well, you didn't, but there was a Calendar Committee that met several times virtually, I believe, way before I started in September. They did the work, they did their due diligence. It's a diverse committee representing all kinds of stakeholders. You know, they made a recommendation. I, I think that the board would consider it and honor it because somebody did the work. Moving forward, I think that there are some easy suggestions that you can adhere to. I think you can ask if a board member could join that as another voice. I, I think leaving it wide open like this right now at this point is very difficult. And I, I'm not sure if people would even be comfortable saying what holidays that they choose to celebrate-
Right.
-or not. So, I'm not sure that should be your data point. There's so much more research that goes into this, I could probably talk for an hour. I will not. My, my recommendation would be to go with what the committee recommended.
And if you guys are curious, there are two members of the public who did include links and interesting informations and things. Yeah, and they were like, oh, here's the study that says. So, they were very detailed. So, that is something also we can, if you are on the, whoever's on the Calendar Committee can take too. I'm sure it's stuff they've considered, but it was also interesting to kind of see that there is, you know, stuff out there.
Yeah, I mean, I just, and that's really what I struggle with. I mean, they did spend the time doing it, right? It's out there. I think, you know, if we decide to start taking away holidays, I mean, people might have already planned vacations based on, you know, even a mock of this. I know I usually look a year ahead. So, I mean, I would be fine supporting it the way it is and, you know, sit on a committee and figure out how it's done and, you know, how we move forward. But I think, you know, everybody has to have equity in it, right? Our teachers have a voice, our parents have a voice, and, you know, and our students have a voice. And I think that that's really what we need to move towards.
So, it sounds like we might be ready to move on this.
Just a couple of things I want to say. I'm not really, not that I'm not concerned about the holiday discussion, but what really stuck out to me, right, is to have the least amount of disruptions for our students. If you notice, January thirteenth, it's a Wednesday. February tenth, March tenth, May nineteenth are all Wednesdays, where typically there's, teachers are staying after school or before school for their, their training or whatever. So, I don't, that's so fractured to me. It was never really presented that way before, so that's new. The day before Thanksgiving was, used to always be a half P day for teachers, so it was half day for students. So, that, that's new. I would like to talk about June, right, building in like two snow days. So, the last day would be June fifteenth. And then having a hard graduation date of the nineteenth, just like similar to this year because you wouldn't have it on the twelfth. And then, if for some reason come April, if we need more snow days and you take away something like Good Friday, right, you, you build in the expectation of, well, if we use the two, the fourteenth and the fifteenth of June, this is the next day to go. Which is some of the structures that some people that wrote in mentioned.
And those are things undoubtedly that the, that the administrative teams will consider, you know, because we can't predict the snow.
I think, but building in snow days, I think is important, especially given this twenty-six, twenty-seven calendar. I think that we should take away some of those Wednesdays and kind of leverage them to how we did in the past.
The PLC days?
Like the PLC days, yeah. And they already have training on, they stay after on the Wednesdays, so.
Rosa, were you, were you going to say something earlier?
Yeah, I mean, similar, similar to Joy. Joy pointed out other things in the calendar. I was more focused on the religious holidays, but, yeah, I mean, I think I voted no on the last two calendars for the same reason because I, I too, you know, really would like to focus on getting rid of some of these fractured weeks. And there's a lot of them. And so, that's sort of my priority. And I would love to see the board have that collectively as a priority. And maybe having a board member on the Calendar Committee can like hammer that home because I think that's, I think that's what we want. But, yeah, I mean, I think it's still a whole-
If you count how many full weeks, right? There's not a lot of full weeks, it's not a lot, which really fractures, you know, instructional time and consistency.
Kids on early dismissal are so engaged.
So, so do you, do you guys, I mean, we, we just got a recommendation from the superintendent.
Yep.
And then we heard some, some reasoned points from both Joy and Rosa. Do you guys feel like you're ready to vote or do you need to discuss more? Yes, please.
Press it, sorry. I wanted to just give some history on the movement of the PLC days from what used to be Fridays to Wednesdays because the after-school Wednesday meetings where staff stays for up to an hour after school, it builds an additional hour to the PLC meeting, which make them a little bit more meaningful because you have more time. So, I just wanted to give that historical information.
I just know as an educator, you have more time when you'd be less engaged. If you're in more PLC time, I think that would go for anyone here.
I, I, I disagree.
As the day progresses.
So, I'm, I'm only going to say, like, I don't mean to be like, you know, obstinate, but like because it's the third year where I feel like we still just have not paid attention to eliminating these fractured weeks, I, I don't, I, and I know, I know that the Calendar Committee did the work and I do appreciate it, but I'm, I, I just, I would like to see less of the days off in the middle of the week. And less, honestly, less half-days, less, less of it all. But, yeah, so I-
That's awful for parents.
That's what I was going to say, is one of the consistent feedbacks was the finding childcare on half-days and days off in the middle of the week is really difficult. And the only other consistent feedback we got was that it's hard to read, and I think we talked about this last time, is that can we re, maybe not for this one, but in going forward, is there a different way to organize the days off so it's more clear which school has what days off when? And the color coding is a little confusing. So, anyway, that was the only other thing. Sorry.
So, are we ready then? Alright, all in favor of approving the 2026-2027 school calendar as recommended by the Calendar Committee? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Okay, so that's four, three, it passes. So, the four were Erin, you, me, and Rob.
Who was it, Erin?
You, me, and Rob. With Sarah, Rosa, and Joy as no.
Yep. And then the only other thing that I like, point of order that I'd like to make is that we have asked as a board that the Calendar Committee add a board member and moving forward to the 2027-2028 school year, consider the things that we've talked about. So, I'd like to see that as a priority. Yeah.
Is there a, a chair to the Calendar Committee? So, can I just write to you? How about I, I send it to Vonda and as a formal request? Okay. Okay. But I mean, a formal request that that happened, okay, awesome. Alright, so there is no public comment for the second phase. What do you have for the three main points?
So, I think the three main points should be the WMS Student Spotlight, the prioritized one-year capital plan projects, and the calendar slash graduation date.
Okay, yeah. Awesome. Alright, then upcoming events?
Yes. Let me go back to that. I have that on there. Alright, so starting with CLES, Sunday, December seventh, the PTO is sponsoring a night of lights in the CLES parking lot. It is open to the public. Think trunk retreat for winter holidays is how it's described. Uh, yeah, I know, it's supposed to be really fun. People come and decorate their cars and it's kind of like a trunk or treat for the winter holidays. Yeah. Please note that the Winter Band Concert has been moved from Wednesday, December tenth to Wednesday, December seventeen. WMS, the Community Screening of Screenagers, the next chapter, will be Wednesday, December tenth at six PM in the auditorium, BHS Auditorium. This screening addresses youth mental health in a digital age. This film is appropriate for middle and high school students, parents, caregivers, and community members. The funding was provided through the BEF Foundation Grant, and it is not available publicly. So, attendance is encouraged because you can become educated and equipped to have productive conversations around issues that face our children.
What time is that?
So, that's December tenth at six PM, Wednesday, December tenth. There was a screening last year that was skewed towards like digital wellbeing and things like that. And this is a revisiting of, it's like the next chapter in that screening. There's also going to be a screening for elementary school as well. It's a series that was funded by the BEF through Mrs. Patterson at the elementary school. And then the, the BHS. So, the freshman forum is tomorrow, November twentieth, at six PM in the auditorium. This forum will equip families with the knowledge to talk to their children about topics related to substance abuse, gambling, and other behavioral topics. Presentations will be shared by Western Connecticut Coalition, General SOS, and the Brookfield High School Counseling Department, and as well as Brookfield Cares. Parents are strongly encouraged to bring their ninth graders with them to stimulate additional conversations after the forum. So, it's tomorrow at six PM in the auditorium. Then we have the Powder Puff Game, Bethel versus Brookfield, November twenty-fifth at seven PM.
Twenty-fourth, you said, right?
So, I, that's, I wanted to ask you because it's on my calendar, the thing they gave me on the twenty-fifth, but you said the twenty-fourth. So, let's confirm while we go to the calendar. Okay, so let me go to the high school calendar and confirm what it says. Principal Edsie, okay, here we go. No, you're probably right. It was what was sent to me. So, November twenty-fifth at seven PM. Right?
That's a Tuesday.
Tuesday, okay. Correct. So, it was sent to me. The date? Okay. So, to confirm, to confirm, the Powder Puff Game is on Tuesday, November twenty-fifth at seven PM, according to Mr. Belanda's update. On the, on the high school page, important dates.
But, I don't know, let us know.
Okay. We'll circle back. Pay attention to the next update from the high school. Okay, so then, uh, let's see, the PTO meeting is December ninth at six PM. Booster Club meeting is six PM, December tenth, and Grad Party meeting is seven PM, December eleventh. This is a very important meeting, everyone, attention, attention, the Grad Party needs more help. That's what I was told to say.
I'm going to have some time on my hands, so.
Yes, I know. Rosa, continue Grad Party. For the district, days off are next Thursday, the twenty-seventh, which is Thanksgiving, and Friday, the twenty-eighth, the day after Thanksgiving, and twenty-sixth is a half-day for students.
Excellent. So, this concludes the portion of our meeting. We, well, I move that we enter executive session.
Do you want to make the actual motion or you want me to?
Um, I'll, I'll go ahead and do it. I, I got started, I've never, I don't think I've ever made a motion. I move that the board enter into executive session to discuss board self-evaluation and matters concerning security strategy. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so it passes unanimously. Thank you for coming, folks.
And no, it will be in this room, we are not leaving the-
And there's no public action.
Because there's no action, yeah.
Alright. Good night, everybody, thanks for coming.